Ellie is fifteen and claimed as a dependent from by her parents. She has eight hundred dollars in dividend income and fourteen hundred dollars in wages from a part-time job. Compute the two thousand and twenty-two standard deduction for the following taxpayer. Okay, so we know. That when you're a dependent. Dependence. Deduct. Four hundred. And we also know that dividends. Income. Does not. Equal. How do I how do I put it? It does not equal like real income like a salary. Yeah, dividend income does not equal income. Therefore. S- income. Is equal to. Fourteen hundred. And the rule for dependence is that if they're making less than eleven fifty. Then you use this number. But since fourteen hundred is greater than eleven fifty. You keep this going. And. You add fourteen hundred. To. Four hundred. And that gives you four eighteen hundred. This is uh Ellie's. Standard deduction. Next question. Ruby and Woody. Are married and file a joint tax return. Ruby is age sixty-six and Woody is sixty-nine. Their taxable retirement income is ten thousand dollars. Okay. So what exactly does that mean? Well, we know. A few things. No. Ruby and Woody. Are greater than sixty-five years old. Therefore. In twenty twenty-two. They're entitled to the deductible of. A certain amount the deductible in question is. Seventeen fifty, I believe. No, that's wrong. Their deductible is fourteen hundred. And there's two of them. And we know that the standard deduction. For married. Filing joint. Is twenty-five. Nine hundred. Therefore, twenty-five nine hundred plus twenty-eight hundred. Is going to equal. Twenty-eight seven hundred. And this is their standard deduction. Shonda is age sixty-eight and single claimed by her daughter as dependent. Earned income is five hundred and interest income is. Hundred and twenty-five. Okay, so this is actually really easy as well. If you take the sum of five hundred. Plus. One twenty-five. That equals six twenty-five. Plus four hundred because she's a. Independent. And this gives you one thousand twenty-five. And we know that one thousand twenty-five. Is less than eleven fifty. In addition. She is. Greater than sixty-five years old. Therefore. She gets eleven fifty. Plus fourteen hundred. And that will equal. My apologies, not fourteen hundred. Eleven fifty. Plus. Seventeen fifty. Because she's single. And that will equal. Twenty-nine hundred. So to explain that. We were just doing the Quizlet a few seconds ago. But what that really is is the following table. The following table includes these numbers. So this is for basic. Standard. Deduction. Amounts. And the basic standard deduction amounts are. For single. Married filing jointly. Surviving spouse. Head of household. And married filing separately. And for twenty twenty-two, which is what we're using. The numbers are as follows. Twelve nine five zero. Twenty-five nine hundred. Twenty-five nine hundred. Nineteen four hundred. And twelve nine fifty. And then. For additional deduction. We have. The same ones, so single, married, filing joint. Surviving spouse, head of household, and married filing single. And those would be. For twenty twenty-two. Seventeen fifty. Fourteen hundred. Fourteen hundred. Seventeen fifty. And fourteen hundred. So this table is just something you're gonna have to memorize. As nothing really tells you this in any of the questions, but as long as you memorize this table. You're going to be golden for the exams. Moving on to the next question. Frazier. Age fifty-five is married, but is filing a separate return. His wife itemizes her deductions. Okay. So first of all, fifty-five. Is less than sixty-five, so. No additional. Deduction. And we know that the itemizes. Itemizing wife. Therefore. He must. Also itemize. What that means is that he's going to get zero. Standard deductions. Compute the two thousand and twenty-two tax liability and the marginal and average tax rates for the following taxpayers. So this is what I'm gonna want you to do. If you don't have this, go on the internet and look up the two thousand and twenty-two tax rate schedule. With that on hand, you can either print it out or just keep it open. On a separate screen. If you do that, then this will be even easier for all of us. Did you get it? Good. So now let's get the following question. Chandler. Who files. As a single taxpayer. Has taxable income of. Control S. Nine thousand. Ninety-four thousand eight hundred. So let's get to work. Calculate. Tax liability. Marginal rate. And average rate. Cool. So first off. We have a tax liability. That is not how you spell liability. Good enough. So tax liability. Has the following formula, and that is T L is equal to. The amount found in the tax schedule, so let me just pull up my tax schedule. I have notes on me, that's why I it makes all that noise. Okay. The tax liability formula is equal to. And hear me out here. The tax is. Plus open parentheses, tax income. Minus. Of the amount over. Times the tax percentage. Therefore. You have the following question here. It said ninety-four thousand eight hundred. Therefore, you open your tax income and look that he has a single, okay, single. Therefore. His income. Of ninety-four thousand eight hundred. Is between. Eighty-nine thousand seventy-five. And. A hundred and seventy thousand. Fifty. Therefore. The formula will go as follows. The tax is. Fifteen thousand. Two hundred and thirteen point five. Multiplied by, I mean, plus. Open parentheses. His taxable income of ninety-four thousand eight hundred. Minus. The amount over. Which in this case will be. Eighty-nine thousand. Seventy-five. Multiplied by the tax percentage, which in this case is twenty-four percent. You'll put that in a calculator. And you should get sixteen five eight seven point five. But for the sake of addition and sake of legibility. We all have tax liability is equal to rounding to the nearest dollar. Sixteen. Thousand five hundred and eighty-eight dollars. Next. We have to calculate other things. For example, we have to calculate. His. Marginal rate. Now thankfully. The tax. Sheet already gives us the marginal rate. Marginal rate. Is equal to. Twenty-four percent. And then finally, average rate. Will be. The taxable income, the tax liability. Divided by the taxable income. And that should give us zero point seventeen four nine. Seven. Which in turn, when you round it up, is seventeen point five percent. And now we have to do it for the next person. Lazare laser. Or it could be Lazar. So now we have to look at head of household. Sure thing, let's do some more calculations. So looking at this, we know that Lazar is head of household. And that he has taxable income. Of. Fifty-seven thousand fifty. So what exactly does this mean? Well, it means that we have to look once again at our tax schedule. Or tax rate. And we see. That fifty-seven thousand. Is between five. Fifty-five thousand nine hundred. And. Eighty-nine thousand. Fifty. Therefore. For tax liability, it's going to be. The tax is. Sixty-four, six. Thousand four hundred and fifty and sixty, wow, I could not say that. The tax liability will be equal to. Six thousand four hundred and fifteen. Plus open parentheses. Taxable income fifty-seven thousand. Fifty. Minus. The amount over. Which will be. Fourteen. My apologies. Which will be. Fifty-five thousand nine hundred. Multiplied by. The percentage, the marginal rate. Equalling zero point twenty-two or twenty-two percent. You put that in a calculator. And you should get the following number. Six thousand six hundred and sixty-eight. Dollars, so this is a devil's number. Marginal rate was already given to us, it is twenty-two percent. And then the average rate will be. Six 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 eight divided by five seven zero five zero. And that should be eleven point six nine percent. Let me just check that again to make sure I plugged it in correctly. Yeah. It is correct. Madeleine sells her personal scooter for five hundred and fifty dollars. She purchased the scooter for seven hundred three years ago. She also sells a painting for twelve hundred that she acquired five years ago for nine hundred. What are the tax implications of these sales? Okay. So sales. Minus. Cost of goods sold. I mean, sales price minus cost of goods sold. Is equal to rev. Give or take. So the first one. We know that she sold. She sold it for five hundred. And fifty. But she purchased it for seven hundred. Therefore, it's a hundred and fifty dollar loss. And then for the other one. We know that she sold the painting for twelve hundred. And acquired it five years ago for nine hundred. Be three hundred gain. So in this case, the tax implication is Madeleine. Has. A one hundred and fifty dollar. Realized loss. On the scooter. And. A three hundred dollar. Realized. Gain. On the painting. Madeleine. Will. Recognize. The gain. Or loss. Associated. With. Only. The painting. That's how you answer that question. Next question. Uh let me just see if I can write the formula itself, and it is. The tax is. Plus. Salad taxable income. Minus amount over. Close parentheses. A marginal rate. Okay. So the next question is as follows. Compute the taxable income for twenty twenty-two in each of the following dependent situations. Aaron and Michelle ages forty and forty-one respectively are married and file a joint return. In addition to four dependent children, they have A G I of hundred and twenty-five thousand. And itemized deductions. Of twenty-seven thousand. So we know that they are married and filing joint and they're itemizing. Therefore. Adjusted gross income. Less. Itemized. Deductions. And that will give us our taxable income. So A G I. Is going to be. A hundred and twenty-five thousand. Itemized deductions are twenty-seven thousand. Therefore, our taxable income. Is ninety-eight thousand dollars. And for what exactly are the answers? This is an answer. This is an answer, and this is an answer. The problem will give you everything else. Sybil age forty is single and supports her dependent parents who live with her. As well as her grandfather who was in nursing home. She has A G I of eighty thousand and itemized deductions of eight thousand. Okay. So. Thing is, this person is single, so we're not gonna bother with itemized deduction. So what we need to do. Is point out that this person is filing as single. In two thousand and twenty-two year of our Lord. So the standard deduction. Is going to be. Less standard deduction. And this standard deduction comes from the questions themselves, which will be. Oh, even though this person is single. I should I should mention this. Single but has dependents. That. Are related. Therefore. Head of household, so. Not. Twelve nine five zero, but. Nineteen. Four five zero. Nineteen thousand four hundred. So the taxable income. Here. Because the question should actually change this, this part of the question is given. Is actually eighty thousand. Taxable income is going to be sixty thousand six hundred. Once again, even though the question says that Sybil. Is single. Sybil is a head of household. That's why. Scott age forty-nine. Is a surviving spouse. Household includes two unmarried subsons who qualify as dependents. Has A G I of seventy-five. Thousand dollars and itemized deductions of. Ten thousand one hundred. Okay. So. Surviving spouse, the other person is most certainly. Not. Doing their taxes because they're dead. I'm I'm calling it, even the government makes you pay taxes when you're dead. How much you wanna bet? Okay, jokes aside. Let's get back to work. In this case, the given A G I. Is seventy-five thousand. And since this is a surviving spouse, we're gonna be using standard income. We standard deduction. Standard deduction. Cool. And the standard deduction for surviving spouse is twenty-five thousand nine hundred as we know. So taxable income is just the subtraction between these two, fourteen nine thousand one hundred. Okay. Very simple. Very fun. See, no wonder Plutus asleep because we're just doing tax problems over and over again. Amelia age thirty-three is an abandoned spouse who maintains a household for her three dependent children. She has A G I of fifty-eight thousand and itemized deductions of ten thousand six hundred and fifty. So once more, this is an abandoned spouse who maintains household. For the dependents, I'm going to treat this like head of household. Therefore, the standard deduction will stay here as the answer. But the given A G I for the problem will be fifty-eight thousand dollars. Standard deduction for a head of household is nineteen thousand four hundred. And the subtraction between them will give us our taxable income, which is going to be thirty-eight thousand six hundred. Chang age forty-two is divorced, but maintains home in which he and Lei daughter live. Lei is single and qualifies as Chang's dependent. Chang has A G I of sixty-four thousand. And itemized deductions of nine thousand nine hundred. Once again. Itemized deduction is that spousal stuff, so we're not even gonna worry about that. Instead, we're gonna worry about standard deduction. So since he is a depend, since he has a dependent. And is divorced, this person qualifies as head of household. Especially since Lei. Herself is not making some real money, assuming that. You know. She qualifies per the problems that she does. A G I given in this problem is sixty-four thousand. And standard deduction for head of household is still nineteen four hundred. Therefore, you just have to do a subtraction, it'll be forty-four thousand six hundred. Very simple, very nice. The following information applies to Emily for two thousand and twenty-two, her feelings that this is single, okay? So just look at these numbers, pay attention to them because we're gonna be using them. And it say indicate whether following items are taxable or non-taxable to Emily, and the following items are salary. Gift. From. Parents. Alimony. Payments. Received. Short. Term. Capital. Gain. From. Stock. Investment. And then interest. Income. From. Bonds. Issued. By. Zerox. So let's go from top to bottom. Salary. Is taxable. Gift from parents is not taxable. Alimony payment received pre-two thousand nineteen, as you can see here, she got her alimony in two thousand and fourteen, so taxable. Short-term capital gain from stock investments. Is very taxable. And interest income from bonds issued by Xerox, since Xerox is not government, it is taxable. So now. There is a second part to this question. Identify whether the items are deductible fully or partially by Emily. And those items would be amount. Lost. In football. Office pool. And contribution. To a traditional. IRA. So the amount lost in football office pool is not deductible. Could you imagine if you could say, oh, I lost the money, so I'm not gonna qualify in my deductions? It's like, oh, hey, government, I lost all my money today, I got robbed, I'm not gonna pay my taxes, hope you understand, bye, yeah. That's why it's not deductible. Remember the hint, if it screws over the consumer, most likely. It is not deductible. If it helps the government, most likely it's deductible. So then we have. Contribution to a traditional IRA is deductible. So now that we have all of this information. We must answer the following question. Emily's taxable income in two thousand and twenty-two. Is what exactly? So let's get to work. We know the following information. She has a salary. She has alimony payment received. What else does she have? She has a short. Term. Capital gain. From stock investment. And she has. Interest income. From bonds issued by Zerox. And the following numbers that go here are eighty-five thousand. Alimony payment received, six thousand. Short-term capital gain of twenty-five, of two thousand five hundred. At interest income of eleven hundred. And this is gross income. The sum of this will equal to ninety-four thousand six hundred. Less. Contribution. To traditional IRA. Which here states to be six thousand. This will be our adjusted gross income, AGI. For eighty-eight thousand six hundred. Then we less. Standard deduction. For whatever the standard deduction is, in this case, we know that Emily is apply, her filing status is single. In two thousand and twenty-two year of our Lord, therefore she has to have the standard deduction of twelve thousand nine hundred and fifty. And this, my friend, will give us the final answer. The final answer here is simply seventy-five thousand six hundred and fifty. And that is Emily's. Taxable. Income. That's how you do all the work for chapter three. Now let's do some chapter four questions. Let's do an easy one first. Hannah lost her job in two thousand and twenty-two when her employer moved its plant. During the year, she collected unemployment benefits for three months, a total of eighteen hundred dollars while she was waiting to hear from prospective employers. She painted her house, if Hannah had paid someone else to paint her house, the cost would have been three thousand. The cost of the paint Hannah used was eight hundred. What is Hannah's two thousand and twenty-two gross income for tax purposes from the above events? Well, that's easy, it's eighteen hundred. Okay. See that, this, this question is a trick question, the, the, the answer is in the question, you just gotta know the answer. You just have to understand the question. Simba and Zola are married but file separate returns. Simba received eighty thousand of salary and twelve hundred of taxable dividends on stock and purchased his name. With the salary he earned since the marriage. Zola collected nine hundred in taxable interest on certificate of deposit she inherited from her aunt. Compute Zola's gross income under two assumptions as to the state of residency of the couple. Okay, so what that means, just so you know. Is that this following table needs to be made. And that would be community property state. And the other one would be common. Law. State. And we're calculating for three different things. Those three different things are dividends. Interest. And salary. And we are calculate. For. Zola. Gross. Income. So let's do this, we know that dividends. Are completely up to her. She inherited none of this, because in common law state, the marriage person who earns it gets to keep it. So since Simba received twelve hundred of taxable dividends. Zola earned zero in a common law state, but in a community property state where the woman takes half, she has six hundred. Then we have the interest. We know she collected nine hundred dollars on interest, so in common law state, it's nine hundred. But in community property state, it's four hundred and fifty, that's right, if your wife collects interest, she only has half interest. Muhaha. Then, in the South Carolina common law state, for example. We know that the salary was collected by Simba and not Zola's, so zero. Meanwhile, Simba's salary was eighty thousand, therefore Zola's salary is forty thousand and in reality, Simba made half. That's right, guys. That's how you'll do this table, pretty simple, pretty fun. Well, not in real life, but you get the points. See that, we can, we can do jokes here, we, we need to tell some jokes honestly, because. I'm not gonna lie, there's a reason they don't teach you this in high school. You know why they don't teach taxation in high school? Besides the fact that the tax companies, tax preparer companies pay the schools to make sure they never teach you. It's also because high schoolers would fall asleep. A taxpayer age sixty-four purchases an annuity from an insurance company for fifty thousand dollars. She is to receive three hundred per month for life, her life expectancy is twenty point eight years. From annuity starting date, assuming that she receives thirty-six hundred this year. Sorry for yelling. How much is included in her gross income? Okay. So, in other words, we're calculating something. Exclusion percentage. And gross income. So how are we calculating this? Let's get to work. So in this case, we need to find. The exclusion percentage. So to get the exclusion percentage, we need the exclusion, the expected return. An expected return is received per month times twelve times life expectancy. And that's going to be. Seventy-four thousand eight hundred and eighty. And now we can get the expected percent, the exclusion percentage. Which is equal to. Annuity, so five hundred, I mean fifty thousand. Divided by seventy-four thousand eight hundred and eighty. Which will give us. Sixty-six point seven seven percent. Now to calculate the gross income, we need to get. How much is in the exclusion amount? And this will be the amount received annually, so thirty-six hundred dollars. Times the percentage zero point six six seven seven. And this will give us. Two thousand four hundred and three point eight. So our gross income will be equal to thirty-six hundred minus twenty-four oh three. Which will be rounded out to twenty-four oh four. And that will give us one thousand one hundred and ninety-six dollars. And that is pretty much everything for the exam. As long as you were able to do this, you're going to pass. Therefore, I want to thank all of you so much for watching, I hope you all enjoyed, have a nice day.
Welcome to another study session, this time we're doing income tax. Let's look through some of the paper assignments, starting with homework one. These are the multiple choice ones, and then afterwards, we'll move on to the free response questions. But that's fine. Indicate whether the following items are included in or excluded from gross income. Amounts received by taxpayer, a baseball Hall of Famer, or for autographing sports equipment. Leave me alone Java. That would be included in. What is the tax formula for individuals? That would be income as broadly defined minus exclusions equals gross income. Minus deductions for adjusted gross income equals adjusted gross income. Minus the greater of the standard deduction or itemized deduction, that is taxable income. Indicate whether the following items are included in or excluded from income for tax purposes. Alimony, pre-two thousand nineteen divorce decree, it would be included, excluded if post-two thousand nineteen. Transaction seven sold a houseboat and a camper on eBay, both were personal use items and the gain from one offset the loss from the other. During the year, Addison is involved in the following transactions. What are the possible income tax ramifications of these transactions? Well, in the case of Addison here. The gains and losses from the sale of a personal use asset cannot offset each other. The gains are taxable and the losses are not deductible. During the year, Addison is involved in the following transactions. What are possible income tax ramifications of these transactions? Contributed to the mayor's reelection campaign, the mayor had promised Addison to have some of her land rezoned. The mayor was reelected and got Addison's land rezoned. Political contributions are not deductible. In choosing between taking the standard deduction and itemizing deductions from AGI. What effect, if any, does each of the tax of the following have? I.e. the health, physical condition of the taxpayer. In this case, if the taxpayer is blind, an additional standard deduction is available. Indicate whether the following statements are true or false regarding the standard deduction. Certain taxpayers are not allowed to claim any standard deduction and the standard deduction is limited for others, true. Indicate whether the following items are included in or excluded from gross income tax purposes. In this case, gifts are excluded. In choosing between taking the standard deduction and itemizing deductions from adjusted gross income. What effect, if any, does each of the following have? The taxpayer filing status. Because the tax, because the amount of the standard deduction varies depending on the filing status, this factor is highly relevant to the decision. Indicate whether the following items are included in or excluded from gross income. Taxpayer sells his Super Bowl tickets for three times what he paid for them. Those would be included in. Indicate whether the following items are included in or excluded from gross income for tax purposes. In this case, prizes are included. Indicate whether the following items are included in or excluded from gross income for tax purposes. Inheriences, assuming they died, then they're excluded. During the year, Addison is involved in the following transactions. What are the possible income tax ramifications for these transactions? Paid a traffic ticket received while double parking to attend a business meeting. Fines and penalties are not deductible. Indicate whether the head of household filing status is, wait, included in. Available or not available for two thousand and twenty-two. In each of the following independent situations, taxpayer is married and maintains a household in which he and his dependent stepson live. Assume the taxpayer does not qualify for abandoned spouse. So in this case, a taxpayer is married and maintains a household. The dependent, the dependent is here. So he clearly has a dependent stepson. I would go for it is not available. And the reason I say not available is because. One of the rules for being a head of household is that it has to be your relevant, your relative. Indicate whether the following statements are true or false regarding the standard deduction. The standard deduction is the sum of two components, the basics deduction and the additional standard deduction. True. During the year, Addison is involved in the following transactions. What are the possible income tax ramifications of these transactions? Contributed to the mayor's reelection campaign, the mayor had promised Addison to have some of her land rezoned. Mayor was reelected and Addison's land rezoned. Borrowing money, my apologies, political contributions are not deductible. Jaden calculates his two thousand twenty-two income tax by using both the tax tables and tax rate schedules. Because the tax rate schedules yield a significantly lower tax liability, he plans to pay this amount. Is Jaden's per approach permissible? The answer is no, because the tax payable must be used except in certain limited situations. During the year, Addison is involved in the following transactions. What are the possible income tax ramifications of these transactions? Transaction seven, sold a houseboat and a camper on eBay. Both were personal use items and the gain from one offset the loss from the other. Gains and losses from the sale of personal use assets cannot offset each other. The gains are taxable and the losses are not deductible. Paul and Sonja, who are married, had itemized deductions of thirteen thousand, two hundred and four hundred respectively during two thousand and twenty-two. Paul suggested they file separately. He will itemize his deductions from adjusted gross income and she will claim the standard deduction. What should they do to ensure the maximum tax benefit? Okay. Both should take the standard deduction. And the reason for that is because if one person. Decides to itemize, the other person is forced to itemize. And same goes vice versa. If one takes the standard deduction, the other person must also take the standard deduction. Indicate whether the following statements are true or false regarding deduction from gross income. In lieu of claiming itemized deductions, taxpayers will use a standard deduction. True. During the year, Addison is involved in the following transactions. What are possible income tax ramifications of these transactions? Lost money gambling on a recent trip to a risk casino. So in this case, gambling losses are deductible to the extent of winnings. Indicate whether the following items are included in or excluded from gross income. Stolen funds the taxpayer had collected from a local food bank drive. These are included in. Fun fact, if you steal money, you must report it on your taxes. Otherwise, the IRS is gonna show up. In choosing between taking the standard deduction and itemizing deductions from AGI, what effect, if any, does each of the following have? Taxpayers uninsured personal residence that was recently destroyed by a wildfire. The region was declared a disaster area by the federal government. Well, in this case, regarding the effect. Would be that because a large casualty loss seems probable, this item might, this increases the advantage to be gained by itemizing. Complete the following statement regarding a surviving spouse. In many cases. A surviving spouse ultimately becomes the head of household for filing status purposes because after the two year. Indicate whether the following items are included in or excluded from gross income. Included. Child support payments received, those are excluded from. Indicate whether the following statements are true or false regarding the standard deduction. Taxpayers are allowed to deduct the lesser of itemized deductions or the standard deduction. The choice is elective. False. Indicate whether the following items are included in or excluded from gross income. Interest income on city of Chicago bonds. Well, bonds are actually government, so it's actually excluded from. In choosing between taking the standard deduction and itemizing deductions from adjusted gross income, what effect, if any, does each of the following have? Whether married taxpayers decide to file separate income returns. If married people file separate returns. And one spouse itemizes, the other spouse must also itemize. These are excluded from. Insurance proceeds paid to the taxpayer and the death of her uncle, she was the designated beneficiary under the policy. Those would be excluded from. In choosing between taking the standard deduction and itemizing deductions from adjusted gross income, what effectif any does each of the following have? The number of dependents the taxpayer can claim. So in this case, the. The number of dependents has no effect. Indicate whether the following items are included in or excluded from gross income for tax purposes. Child support payments. Excluded. Complete the following statement regarding a surviving spouse. In many cases, a surviving spouse ultimately becomes the head of household for filing status purpose, uh, because of the two year. Uh, the reason it's cut off like this is because there's actually an entire second half of the text. But for the sake of making the answering tolerable. I have decided to. Split it like this. During the year, Addison is involved in the following transactions. Sold a houseboat and a camper on eBay, both were personal use items and the gain from one offset the losses. Once again, gains and losses from the sale of personal use assets cannot offset each other. In choosing between taking the standard deduction and itemizing deductions from AGI, what effectif any does each of the following have? The taxpayers uninsured personal residence that was recently destroyed by a wildfire. The region was declared disaster area by the federal government. Because a large casualty loss seems probable, this increases the advantage to be gained by itemizing. Indicate whether the following statements are true or false regarding the standard deduction. Certain taxpayers are not allowed to claim any standard deduction and the standard deduction is limited for others. True. Indicate whether the following items are included in or excluded from gross income. Taxpayer sells a Super Bowl tickets for three times what he paid for them. That would be included in. Paul and Sonja, who are married and had itemized deductions of thirteen thousand, two hundred. And four hundred dollars respectively during two thousand and twenty-two. Paul suggested they file separately. He will itemize his deductions from AGI and she will claim the standard deduction. Is Paul's statement correct? No. What is the formula for individuals gross, it's income broadly defined minus exclusion equal gross income, gross income minus deductions for AGI equal adjusted gross income. And adjusted gross income minus the greater of the standard deduction or itemized deductions equals taxable income. Indicate whether the following items are included in or excluded from stolen funds is included in. As a general rule, personal expenditures are disallowed as deductions in arriving at a taxable income. True. Jury duty fees are included. Indicate whether head of household filing status is available or not available for two thousand and twenty-two in each of the following independent situations. Taxpayer, single parent maintains a home in which she and her unmarried son live. Son earns five thousand dollars from part-time job, assumes son is not full-time student and is not available aged eighteen. This will be not available. Taxpayer, single parent maintains a home in which she and her unmarried son live. Son is eighteen, earns five K. Well, the guy's making less than. Minimum wage. So in this case, it's gonna be available. Indicate whether the following statements are true or false regarding deductions from gross income. Non-business expenses are expenses incurred by connection with some income producing activity that does not qualify as a trade or business such expenses are deductions. For adjusted gross income. I'm gonna go with no. Wait. False. Interest income on Chicago bonds are excluded from. Borrowed money from a bank to make a down payment on an automobile. Borrowing money does not constitute income. Taxpayer maintains a home in which she and her dependent father live. The father enters a nursing facility for treatment for a mental disorder, assumed that the stay is temporary. The answer is it is available. Indicate whether the following items are included or excluded from gross income. About received by the taxpayer, a baseball Hall of Famer for autographing sports equipment. Example, balls and gloves. Included in. Jaden calculates his two thousand and twenty-two income tax by using both the tax tables and the tax rate schedules. Because the tax rate schedule yields lightly slower tax liability, he plans to pay this amount. Is Jaden's approach permissible? The answer is no, because the tax table must be used except in certain limited conditions. In choosing between taking the standard deduction and itemizing deductions from AGI, what effectif any does each of the following have? In this case, the health of the taxpayer. Well, in this case. If a taxpayer is blind, an additional standard deduction is available. In choosing between taking the standard deduction and itemizing deductions from AGI, what effectif any does each of the following have? Age of the taxpayers. Well, in this case, the age of the taxpayer may favor a standard deduction if the taxpayer is age sixty-five or older. Indicate whether the following items are included in or excluded from gross income. Reward paid by the IRS for information provided that led to the conviction of the taxpayer's former employer for tax evasion. I think that this is actually included in because the IRS is still gonna take your money anyways. Contributed to the mayor's reelection campaign. Remember that political contributions are not deductible. Whether taxpayers rent their own residence. So in choosing between taking standard deduction and itemized deduction from AGI, what effectif any does the following have? So in this case, if the taxpayer is still making house payments, the inheritance deduction may make itemizing more effective, attractive. Sold a houseboat and a camper on eBay. Both were personal use items and the gain from one offset the loss from the other. Gains and losses from the sale of personal use assets cannot offset each other. The gains are taxable and the losses are not deductible. Indicate whether the following items are included in or excluded from gross income amounts received by the taxpayer. This is included. In. Paul and Sonja, who are married and had itemized deductions of thirteen thousand, two hundred and four hundred respectively. During two thousand and twenty-two, Paul suggests that he will file separately. He will itemize his deductions from a gross, the gross income and she will claim the standard deduction. What should they do to ensure the maximum tax benefit? So in this case, we should just take the standard deduction. During the year, stock that the taxpayer purchased as an investment doubled in value. Excluded from. In choosing between taking the standard deduction and itemizing deductions from adjusted gross income, what effectif any does each of the following have? The taxpayers uninsured personal residence that was recently destroyed by a wildfire. So in this case, because a large casualty loss seems probable, the increase, the advantage to be gained by itemizing. During the year, Addison is involved in the following transactions. What are the possible income tax ramifications of these transactions? Transaction two, helped pay for her neighbor's dental bills. The neighbor is a good friend who is unemployed. So in this case. Barring an exception for dependence, so that no deduction is allowed for payments of some other person's expenses. Indicate whether the head of household's filing status is available or not available for two thousand and twenty-two in each of the following independent situations. Taxpayer lives alone but maintains the household where her dependent daughter lives. Well, in this case, it would be inclu- it would actually be. Taxpayer lives alone, maintains a household. Oh, lives alone. Okay, yeah, 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 lives alone. So I, for, I misread that. This is not available. Indicate whether the following statements are true or false regarding the deduction from gross income. As a general rule, personal expenditures are disallowed as deductions in arriving at taxable income. True. Indicate whether the following items are included in or excluded from gross income. Stolen funds the taxpayer has collected for a local bank food drive. So in this case, the stolen funds are actually included in. Jury duty fees are excluded. No, my bad, my bad, my bad. Indicate what the following items are included or excluded from gross income for tax purposes. Jury duty fees are included. Alimony pre-two thousand nineteen. This would be included. Indicate whether the following items are included in or excluded from jury duty fees. That would be included in. Whether the head of household filing status is available or not. In two thousand and twenty-two of each of the following independent situations. Taxpayer maintains a household and includes an unrelated friend who qualifies as his dependent. This is actually a case of not available because to have head of household status, it needs to be. Something else. This is just not available. Sold a houseboat and a camper on eBay, both were personal use items and the gain from one offset the loss from the other. So in this case, the gain to loss with the sale of personal use assets cannot offset the other. The gains are taxable and the losses are not deductible. Interest income on city of Chicago bonds are excluded from because you cannot, you don't have to pay the taxes on bonds. Indicate what the following items are included in or excluded from gross income for tax purposes. Child support payments are excluded. One hundred percent. The following information applies to Emily for two thousand and twenty-two. Her filing status is single. Salary is eighty-five thousand. Interest income from bonds issued by Xerox is eleven, is one thousand, one hundred. Alimony payments received divorced incurred in two thousand and fourteen, meaning pre-two thousand nineteen divorce. Six thousand. Contribution to traditional IRA, six thousand. Gift from parents, two dot, twenty-five thousand. Short-term capital gain from stock investment, two thousand, five hundred. Amount lost in football office pool, a gambling loss, five hundred. Age forty. Emily has no winnings this year. Identify whether the items are deductible. Fully or partially by Emily, amount lost in a football awesome pool. So in this case, it's actually. Not deductible. Just because you lost the money doesn't mean that you can't, don't have to pay taxes on it. Okay, my friend? You still earned it. It's still part of your income, bro. Suck it up. Indicate whether the following items are taxable or non-taxable to Emily. Salary is taxable. Emily's taxable income is. Okay, so in this case, as you can see, we have the following information. So let's get to work. In this instance, we know that her income. Or salary. Whoa. Is equal to eighty-five thousand. Then we know that the alimony. Payments. Received. Are equal to six thousand. And I'm actually going to put the eighty-five thousand up here. Afterwards, we have short-term capital gain. Which will equal two thousand, five hundred. Then we have interest income. Which will equal one thousand, one hundred. So the sum of this will give us gross income. Which is equal to nine thousand, four hundred, I mean ninety-four thousand, six hundred. Then less contribution. To traditional. IRA. And that's equal to six thousand. And this will give us the AGI, adjusted. Gross. Income. Which will be eighty-eight thousand, six hundred. Then we less standard deduction. And we know that she's forty years old, meaning, and she's single. So forty years old, single, has no dependents. Meaning that she gets the most basic one of twelve thousand nine hundred and fifty. So from here, we're going to get Emily's taxable income. And this will be equal to the subtraction of these two being seventy-five thousand six hundred and fifty. Which is right here. I just wanted to show you this. Why does that say seven, six, zero, five? Oh, that's because this is calculated for two thousand and twenty-one. This is what I just calculated for was two thousand and twenty-two. I'm mid-sorry about that. The reason it's twelve, five, five, zero is because in two thousand and twenty-one, it was twelve, five, five, zero, but in two thousand and twenty-two, it was twelve, nine, five, zero. Hope that clears confusion. The following information applies to Emily for two thousand and twenty-two. Her filing status is single salary. Eighty-five thousand, we already read this. Identify whether the items are deductible by Emily. Contribution to the traditional IRA is deductible. Gifts from parents are non-taxable. Okay, short-term capital gains from stock investment is taxable. Alimony payments received. Well, this alimony payment is two thousand and fourteen, meaning that it does not post two thousand and nineteen. Therefore, it is taxable. Okay, this is taxable. Gift from parents, not taxable. Contribution to traditional IRA, the taxable. This is deductible. Income in two thousand and twenty-two is this. I already showed how to do it. Salary is taxable. Short-term taxable or not, short-term capital gains is taxable. Alimony payments received because it's pre-two thousand and nineteen is taxable. Amount lost in a football office pool is not deductible. Yes. Oops, not that, don't do that. You know, I'm actually a top creator on Quizlet. I had no idea you could get that. It's kind of cool. How come I can't be top creator on youtube.com, huh? I'm kidding. I'm kidding. Alright, so problem twenty-eight is solved. Now let's do homework two. Is Sonja subject to the F-better reporting requirement? The answer is yes, because she has a over ten thousand in a foreign bank account. According to Supreme Court, would it be good tax policy to use income as computed by financial accounting principles as the correct measure of income? Okay, so the primary goal of the tax system is the equitable collection of revenues. Yes, true. Well, we all know the truth. The truth of the tax system is so that the government could take money from people. But given the fact that this is a school, they're not going to make that claim. They want people to love their taxes. That way they keep voting them in, saying, we promise to lower your taxes, only for them to realize that once they lower the taxes, there's nothing for them to do. But now I'm getting off topic. Indicate whether the following statements are true or false regarding the concept of gross income. While Constitution grants Congress power to tax income, it does not define them. True. Payments lent would actually create gift tax each year the loan is outstanding. The purpose of constructive receipt doctrine is prevent cash basis taxpayers from the foreign recognition of income. So in other words, let's say hypothetically for the sake of argument that I give you a check on December twenty-nine twenty XX. But you cash it on January third twenty XX plus one. What this will do is create it so that you have to recognize it on the twenty-ninth of two thousand XX instead of twenty X at X zero plus X plus one. That is what that is for. Economists measure income by first determining the fair market value of individuals' net assets at the beginning and end of the year. True. Gross income is not limited to tax received. True. Accountant tax rules regarding income are the same. False. Primary goal of the income tax system is to collect all taxes. False. Even though that's what they say is false, we all know it's true, but let's, let's let them believe it's false. Is interest income taxable in the United States? Yes. Because the government will tax you for anything you can and will do. Twenty thou, on December twenty-nine, two thousand and twenty-two, an employer received a five thousand dollar check from a employer's client. Check was payable to employer. Employer did not remit the funds to the employer until December thirty, twenty twenty-two. Tore deposited check on December thirty-first, twenty twenty-two, but the bank did not collect it. Okay, okay. So what's going on here is an application of the of the, where is it? Of the constructive receipt doctrine. Therefore, in two thousand and twenty-two, because the check is received considered, because the check received is considered a cash equivalent and the basis tax management is regarding income when the check is received. Ally can report a twenty-five thousand loss on this tax return. False. The accounting concept of income is founded on the realization principle. True. Did not receive cash, therefore no income. False. True regarding taxation of social security benefits. Okay, so in this case, it'd be that eighty-five percent of the maximum amount of taxable social security benefits. Hundred percent. Go baby. Welcome back. It is a new day. Let's continue. Additional deduction for a sixty-five-year-old and or blind, single, twenty-twenty-one. That would be blind and single is seventeen, because it's twenty-twenty-one, right? Yeah, it is. Head of household for basic standard deduction in twenty-twenty-one, that would be eighteen, eight hundred. Surviving spouse in twenty-twenty-one, that would be thirteen fifty. Sixty-five-year-old A and or blind, twenty-twenty-one, head of household, seventeen hundred. Married filing jointly, twenty-twenty-one. Basic standard deduction. Twenty-five, one hundred. Twenty-eight-one surviving spouse. That would be twenty-five, one hundred. For single, twenty-twenty-two, blind, seventeen fifty, I believe. Married filing jointly. That would be oh, twenty-twenty-two, so twenty-five, nine hundred. Head of household, twenty-twenty-two, that's uh seventeen fifty. Married filing separately for sixty-five and up. That is for twenty-two, what, forty hundred? No, it's not. Is it? Wait, additional deduction for twenty-twenty-one, married filing separately. Thirteen fifty. Married filing separately for twenty-twenty-two, that would be twelve, nine, fifty, no? Yeah, twelve, nine, fifty. Yeah. Basic standard deduction amounts, twenty-twenty-one, married filing separately. Twenty-twenty-one, so twelve, five, fifty. Surviving spouse. Uh, and or blind, twenty-twenty-two, surviving spouse. That would be fourteen hundred. Basic standard deduction amounts, twenty-twenty-two, surviving spouse. Twenty-five, nine hundred. Twenty-twenty-two, single? That's twelve, nine, fifty, I believe.